Okay, good evening, everybody. On a call meeting of the April 4th, 2019, work session legislative meeting of the North Hill School District together, and we could all rise for a moment of silence and a salute to the flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay, once again, welcome, everybody. This is obviously a very special evening for all of us. We're here this evening to pay tribute and honor the life of our colleague, our friend, Arlene Bender, who served this district for over thirty-one years. And that's service. If I could, I'd kind of get a kick out of elected officials who are paid for what they do, and I'm sure a lot of us would trade their paychecks today, and they call that service. Well, try thirty-one years of not being paid that service. And we all know that Arlene was truly, truly dedicated to the district. I mean, she really poured on her heart and her life to this district in so many ways. She was not only a school board member, but she was involved in the community, and she was obviously a loving wife, a wonderful mother, grandma. Jim and I sort of have a running joke. He said to me one time, "I think you spend more time with my wife than I do." I said, "That's why she's always smiling." You do, he's like... I do want to say, this is again, a very special evening, as we all feel and have been affected by Arlene's life and her dedication to this district, and it's just unmatched with her service and how she's, how she conducted herself here. So, that being said, I want to congratulate the family on a job well done by Arlene. And I'll go at this point, turn it over to Dr. Manerino to show to you.
Thanks, Ed. As Ed said, Arlene Bender was first elected to the North Hill School Board in 1980, and for a four-year term, and then again in 1991, and for the next twenty-seven years, she committed herself to the students and staff and taxpayers of this great district, and she did so up until the time of her passing in August. In those thirty-one years, she upheld and supported the policies of the board, voted always to do with divestitures of children, and worked alongside numerous other board members, always holding true to her motto, "Our children are tomorrow." Arlene served as school board president three times, vice president four times, and was an executive member of A.W. Beatty Board for most of her tenure. Six different superintendents had the privilege of working with Arlene: Dr. Josh Geller, Dr. Jim Higgins, John Isaiahus, Dr. Joe Clapper, Dr. Joe Goodnack, Stan Bead. It's my great honor to have been given this opportunity to spend sixteen years of my career with Arlene. She truly led red to the white that was red, and she is the district's longest-serving board member. For that, we dedicate this room in her honor and her memory, and her legacy will always be with us. Mr. Arlene Bender, please grab the paper.
This is wrong order. I am Arlene Bender's husband. And when I'm called that, I experience both pride and joy. I know Arlene the best, and I know her the most. She was gifted with a caring spirit, which allowed her to see the worth and dignity in every person she met. She was also gifted with a strong will and with a powerful intellect. The combination of those three, plus all her other gifts, and all that she was, she dedicated to public education. More specifically, she dedicated herself to the North Hill School District, the boys and the girls of North Hills, and the families of Ross and Westfield. So, on behalf of the Bender family and the friends here of Arlene, Ed Wilgus, with a profound sense of gratitude, I thank you for choosing to honor Arlene in this way. To use Arlene Bender and leadership in the same sentence is so wonderful. Dee, Tom, Toya, Annette, Lou, Sandy, Alan, Kathy, and Stancia. It is with a spirit of profound gratitude that I thank you for your decision to set Arlene as a role model to the girls and boys of North Hills, as well as to school board To our son Jim and daughter, LaGina, what you did the past three years is beyond value for your mother and mother-in-law, my quitter all. You were a constant friend, Arlene, for many years, all the way to the end, and I thank you. Dan Paul, you educated Arlene always and made her a stronger school board director, Lori Reaver, thank you for loving her. No words can capture, but I can come up with what Arlene and you fudged together, did together your relationship. Projects, the programs, the buildings, the bond issues, the curriculums, strengthening up the teacher corps, policy, year in and year out. What I thank you for is your respect for her and your love for her in life and in Thank you all friends being here. I conclude with, "God bless. God bless the North Hills community."
I just want to say in conclusion, several times in the last of the years that Arlene was here, I drove home from school readings and we talked about it, and I, all the years I spent with her, and all of us, I've never heard her say one thing about you that was negative, nothing. When I asked her, I went, "Arlene, there's got to be something, you know? So, you talk about a model that you would want to model a marriage after? That was one that you would want to do." I'm just telling you, I just never heard her complain about anything. I mean, you walked on water for her, and it seemed that way, Jim, so I, I know we talked about that, but we used to just discuss things, and that, of course...
We on camera.
I would be kind of doing my complaint, I hope that's... But anyway, I just, I just, her and I just would have those kind of conversations on the way home, and I just, we just talked about that, and she never, I never, as God has my witness, never said anything that would even remotely say that Jim didn't do something right for her. So, that's a tribute to a marriage well, well-lived.
Oh, I did.
Oh, yeah. All right, so there we are. You better have a talk. Well, thanks, I want to thank everybody for coming this evening. This is a wonderful way of giving a tribute to someone who really poured their light and heart into what they did at this district. So, we are going to take a five-minute break for anybody that wants to stay or leave, but thank you all again for coming, at least those of you that are friends and family of Jim. It's beautiful, and anytime you feel free to come and look at, and we're very proud of... And by the way, our, our maintenance crew, our Buildings and Ground crew did this room over. This was not contracted out, they did a great job, and they did a wonderful remodeling of it, and it was just a great way of taking off the new leadership center. Thank you all for coming, thank you. So, we'll take a five-minute break. [inaudible] Action, I don't know if anybody has any comments this evening. Ellie has, okay, Ellie, you first, and then Apple.
I just wanted to mention in the sphere of Arlene, because she was very passionate about A.W. Beatty, that their fish fry is still going on during the season, and I am a vegetarian, but I left myself last week, and I have vegetarian options. So, Friday, April 5th, and Friday, April 12th, between 12:00 and 3:00 p.m., and 4:00 to 7:00 p.m., you can get a lot of food at a very reasonable price.
Thank you. Is that dinner too, right, lunch and...
Lunch and dinner, and we got...
Thank you for that reminder. Annette?
I just wanted to, once again, congratulate our North Hills Wind Ensemble and our music program and our directors. They played this morning at the Convention Center, the All East Convention of the National Association for Music Education, and you know, all the board was there, and Dr. Manerino introduced them, and it was just incredibly proud, Lord Hills, about it, to see what our kids and our teachers accomplished. And it was standing around the crowd, and people standing ten deep in the hall, just stumped on by our kids. They're still good, it's just, it's amazing, it's just, it just gives, I just, I'm so proud of them, and so, as a former band one, band parent, I just have to give a shout-out and just congratulate everybody.
We've had this, you know, we have, we have a history of great directors, but no disrespect to Linus, he's brought it up a notch.
You know, for me, when we were leaving, the number of band directors at other districts that came to comment about how wonderful our kids were, that they had to, you know, take time out of their day to make sure that they came to this performance, was just overwhelming as I, as I walked out of the room. I talked to at least six different band directors, and I had a short walk from where we were sitting to the exit, and so that also just says a lot about what the North Hills Band means to the other school districts and the other band directors around us. And we know they're wonderful, but whenever we go to those performances, and you see what we saw today, a convention center room that literally had no seats available, that there were people standing in the hallway to listen to our kids perform, and then the number of people that we interacted with on the way out to just compliment us about those students' performance, and it's unsolicited, and that's what just means so much about it. It was just a really nice morning.
And it's the All East, it's not even just locally, it's fairly eastern half of Kentucky.
Amen, absolutely. Kelly, oh, Dee?
I just want to say something about the play.
Please.
It was absolutely fantastic. I think they could take it to Heinz Hall today. There wasn't a kid in that, it was, I don't even know what to say about it, it was so good. I was in the front row, they didn't miss a step, they danced, they sang, the musicians were fantastic. It was actually, it could be played down at Heinz Hall, that's how good I felt it was. That was my opinion.
Did you cry?
Yeah, a little bit at the end.
I think you can tell from my speech earlier, I cried.
Yeah, a couple of things. One, I echo what Dee just said, and the kids were, the kids were truly challenged. I mean, I, I'm going to call my cousin Gene and his family and make sure we get him a award. Wait for it. But also, the last couple of weeks, I've been going around to all the schools, and I've visited all the elementary schools, and the middle school, and the high school, and I just wanted to share with everyone that I have been truly amazed at what goes on in our schools, with the kids, with the teachers, and we have representatives here this evening. It is truly amazing. I often say we're the best kept secret in North Hills, in the North Hills area, but I would challenge everybody to make sure that we are not so well-kept of a secret, that we let people know what it is that we're doing. A particular interest to me, of course, was when I was at the high school, when I went to the shops. Now, you know, when I was a kid, you went to the shops, and we'd smoke cigarettes in the woodshop and stuff.
You rolled your own.
Which you weren't supposed to do. But I'll tell you now, and Matt's here, the machine shop and the woodshop, they're the most wonderful things that I've ever seen in my life, that kids do in these shops, in addition to all the academic things. And I forget the one class that we were in, Pat, but the kids were, they were doing architectural renderings of a building that they had created that could be added on to our, where the auditorium and everything is, and I looked at that, and I said, "You know, we spend thousands and thousands of dollars in architectural terms, and I'm looking at an architectural rendering, it's the most amazing thing I ever saw in my life." So, these kids are truly amazing, so my hat goes off to our administration and support and to the, and to the teachers and the kids and their parents as well. We do a wonderful job, so.
Great, thank you. Anybody else?
Well, they did that rendering to add more space to put machine tools in and welding stations.
Thanks, sir.
Donation's coming. When I left the play, I went a week ago, Friday, I walked out there and I saw, you know, using the vernacular, "How is the Kelly Committee going to screw us this year?" So, went to see.
And by the way, with respect to the musical, this was the first year that Lauren Sarason directed a musical, or Mr. Ritchie had done it all these years, and she herself, years ago, as a graduate, sang and danced on that stage, so hats off to her. I mean, that was not an easy thing to do, so, and it looks like they didn't skip a beat. If anything, they let it...
We'll see how it works.
Yeah, it was really great. Yeah, congratulations to all the performers, the directors, and people, all the parents who spent time just putting all that together, that's a heck of a job, so, that was wonderful.
Can I, can I?
Yes, ma'am.
Since I think I'm the only one who hasn't spoken, I just wanted to, oh, ten minutes, I'm sorry.
Oh, no, I have nothing.
I just, I, in the absence of our student reps, I wanted to, since I don't have one, I just wanted to mention, congratulations to our March Athletes of the Month, who were Patty Behody for Girl Swimming and Sam Hilligas for...
Thank you.
I don't have anything else, I didn't prepare a statement, but that's, you know, I found a little bit aside, so I just want to mention that. Congrats to them.
Anything else? All right, we could now move on, we don't, nobody signed up for public comments on the agenda items, so we can now move on to approval of the minutes, and I'm going to motion that the board approve the minutes for the March 14th, 2019 Work Session Legislative Meeting per the attached. Is there any discussion?
Mrs. Riger, I have to abstain on that vote.
Okay.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. I'm assuming we have nothing from the solicitors evening.
No, we had the executive session prior to the meeting.
Oh, that's right, thank you, thank you for reminding me. We can now move on to, well, we don't have anything under education, so...
I have one education-related comment I want to make or discussion. I had a meeting with David Lieberman last week for this week, it's been a long week, at the middle school. I went down just to look at how the scheduling process is going, and the new changes that are going to be implemented this year, so that, to improve the communication with parents, and parents will be given the opportunity to review their sixth grader transitioning to seventh grader's schedule, and seventh grade transitioning to eighth grader's schedule, and I think this is a really positive change that we're making, and it looks like everything's going really smoothly. And I also understand that Dr. Williams is done with the master scheduling at the high school, and that's all on track.
Thank you, thank you. Okay, we can now then move on to athletics and activities. Ms. Zara?
Yeah, before I get to the items on the agenda, I wanted to mention that some of us from the board went to the Ross Township Commissioners Meeting on Monday. They had an, or they had a field turf present on the proposed turfing to, of Herb Field. Some of you who have been to these meetings before remember that we have had some discussion regarding whether the board is generally in favor of working with the township to, you know, provide some financial support to the township, to, to help them with that turfing project. In exchange for that, we would have a set, basically write a first refusal for a certain period of time to use the field. I think Dee and, Dee and Ed and Ellie were there for the presentation, and then the public comments afterwards, and basically, I'm mentioning it now because it's on the township's plate to resolve the issues that were brought up, and the issues that some of the commissioners had to determine if they're able to approve the project, and if they are, it would be contingent on our participation, which would, is an issue that would need to be worked out between the respective solicitors to ensure that everybody's interests are protected. We are at this point waiting to see if they're able to do that, and then they would, you know, present that to us, and then we would be in a position to, you know, discuss it further and determine whether we wanted to proceed with that. So, I just wanted to update everybody that that's kind of where we are, and those of you that were at the meeting, I don't know if you have anything to add on that.
Yeah, they still have a lot of, I mean, from my perspective, they still have a lot of work to do, working out the details, and even the, at least I heard, if I heard correctly, that even the price has come down since they started.
They were able to negotiate it, so they, some of the things that had been included in the initial preliminary quotes we saw, were, are able to be done by the township, which, you know, one of the reasons that we don't want to publicize votes, so that's something that they were able to kind of work out, and yeah, they're definitely still working on details.
So, the ball's still in their court, and where he's going to sit back and wait and see what they have to present to us.
Correct, yep.
Do they record their meetings for the public to view?
They have the woman doing the shorthand.
The presentation, and the reason I'm asking is the presentation from the field turf company was very comprehensive and informative.
Which I'm sure we can get a copy of.
Yeah. All right. Okay, so, I have five items. The first is that the board approve the field turf request from the band chorus to attend the Musics in the Parks Festival in Williamsburg, Virginia, April 16th and 19th, 2020. The students will miss one day of school, and this trip is funded by the boosters and the students, with a cost to the district, just being for the substitute teachers and nurses, depending on the need, so approximately $550. The next three are that the board approve continued recognition of club sports. The first is club softball, and the district reimbursement would be in the amount of $972.58. The girls' slow pitch softball has met the guidelines and qualifications set forth for continued recognition and reimbursement for club sports. The second is the bowling club, which has also met the guidelines and qualifications, and the reimbursement amount for that club is $632.50. The third is ice hockey. Again, they've met the guidelines and qualifications, and their reimbursement amount is $8,236.16, because everything involving hockey costs more money than everything else. The next one is a new student-initiated club, with the North Hills Ski Club. The purpose of the North Hills Ski Club is to operate by organized monthly ski trips to Stone Springs, Hay Valley, or any other location in the region. The objective is to teach students how to ski and snowboard. The ski club would be open to students in grades seven to twelve, and Ms. Regina Morby has agreed to voluntarily oversee the club. This club is student-initiated, and therefore, no district monies will be provided to the club or sponsor. So, that's, those are the end of the items. So, the superintendent recommends, and I assume that the board approve athletics and activities items one through five.
Second, is there any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. We don't have anything for the agenda under Beatty. Mr. Kelly or Ms. Nidie, I don't know if you have anything to add for Beatty at this point.
I just have one comment. I've registered for the Carl D. Perkins Career and Technical Education Act discussion up at Butler County Community College. It's basically to satisfy the federal government's requirement on how will the state education satisfy the requirements to get additional funding for career centers. And I have a second motive there, is to go up and try and get school districts to send in the, there we go, the resolutions on the charter school. Kind of, well, we'll dig into the, into that later in the legislative discussion, but I think we have a problem getting schools on board, because the same situation, we brought the thing to legislative platform committee ten years ago, we had opposition, so, but we'll discuss that later, so.
Thank you.
The only other thing I think to add with Beatty is that they're finalizing the budget, and we'll be receiving the budget documents and everything to be approved at our May meetings. It's a, it's a really good budget for, again, a school that's growing. They have a significantly high number of students attending Beatty across the nine area schools, and so the budget's going to be slightly up, but we've been working on it for several months, since at least November, and our share doesn't go up significantly, but it will go up, because we have more students attending A.W. Beatty over the five-year span than we had previously. So, that will be coming here in May for us to approve.
Thank you. We can then now move on to personnel actions, over to Mrs. Beatty.
Personnel items are discussed in executive session, therefore, the superintendent recommends, and I say move, that the board approve personnel items one through three.
Is there any discussion? Before we, well, let's, let's take a vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. I just, I just wanted to mention that with, with the personnel actions, we do now have an agreement, as a quote, perhaps an early word agreement on the, with the teachers, and we want to thank the bargaining unit with the teachers, so that we negotiated this what we think is a very fair and responsible agreement, and, you know, these, these negotiations went, they were difficult, as both sides, when you sit down there, when you're talking about people's salaries and people's benefits, these aren't things that are easily discussed and just brushed over. These are, these are things that have to take some time, and I thought at least Dee and I sat in there in the, in the negotiations along with Dr. Manerino, obviously, and with the bargaining unit from the NHGA, and again, these were, these were difficult times to try to get through these things. We all had, we both sides had during the negotiations, some of those, "Are you kidding me" moments, and... moments, and, you know, so you kind of get through that stuff. And it's not easy today with the limited resources that not only us, but all school districts have when it comes to these kinds of things. I think for both sides, I'm sure there are things that we would both like to have had that just couldn't make it because of resources and just all things in general, given the budget constraints that we're under these days. But all that being said, from a positive perspective, I, I was really pleased with the way the whole, the whole bargaining session went. I thought it was just very professional. There were no, nothing personal there. There weren't, there weren't any moments where people were literally angry, and that's happened years ago in the past. But that being said, it was done in a very professional manner, and we literally went through that document line by line, it was a hundred and forty pages or whatever. So there were many, 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 many hours spent trying to get this done and, and lost time. But I can honestly say, at least from my perspective, and I think this is a good thing when it comes to our NHGA and with our other units too, we have labor harmony in this district, and that's a good thing. That's a very good thing. And I just think that that's something to be said about this district, about the board and the, and both sides, not only the NHGA, but our administrative team that helped put this all together. So I want to thank everybody for that. And I don't know, if you have anything you want to say, because I know you've been through many of these sessions over your lifetime, and Dr. Manarino.
I just feel that it was one of the best negotiations I've ever been through on both sides. It was very fair, very honest. Everybody was willing to work whatever the problem was out and come to a decision. And that's because of the leadership of the union and Dr. Manarino. It was one of the most, I'll use the word classiest negotiations I've ever sat through, and I've sat through a few that weren't so classic. Thank your lawyers.
Right. That's right. I want to thank Matt Devmater who's here tonight, Ruben Clark, and Tina Norman or not, but I want to thank the three of them. And I know Sherry Kovach and Bicky Truson are here as well, but this whole process was more of a spirit of collaboration and problem solving. It was not contentious or combative. And we're coming from different sides, and, and I think that's where maybe Dee talks about some of those that aren't, aren't always like that. But we're in this together, and it's something I've been saying since I became superintendent. And it's the only way that this district is going to survive is if, if we're in this together, with the best interest being in the minds of what we do for students every day. And that's what the union came to the table with, and that's what the administration came to the table with. And that's how we end up with a contract that is ratified by the union, ratified by the board, and it's April. We worked long and hard to get us to April, but in a spirit of collaboration and problem solving. And that's what I, I took out of it. So I want to thank you and your team and your committee for the hard work that you did, because it was a long process. Ed said line by line, we went word by word. And we, it was, it was a tedious process that needed to happen, and, and as he said, it's fair on both sides. I know, you know, we're happy with it from the vote that was taken. It seems as though your side's happy with it. So five years from now?
We're back at it.
We get to do it all again. Thank you for the, the way you handled the negotiations and the process, and, and it allowed us to get to the situation where you approved it last night and we approved it tonight. So congratulations.
Thank you. Thank you all. Thank you for working on that. Okay, we don't have anything other community intergovernmental relations, and I, doesn't appear we have anything on the, on the notes here for legislative. But Mr. Nudie, you said you might have had something just to mention.
Okay, well, the, from a legislative standpoint, some things that are working in Harrisburg right now are increasing the age, purchasing vaping equipment from eighteen to twenty-one. I don't know how that, that's going to go, but at least it's a step in the right direction as far as schools are concerned. There is a lot of, there are at least two committees that are being formed to look at funding of charter schools. Charter schools and cyber charter schools. Now, there are two resolutions, there are two bills out there, Senate Bill thirty-four and House Bill five-twenty-six, to eliminate the assessment of schools who have their own in-house cyber charter school, where parents in those communities would have to pay for their students to pay, their, their students to, to attend a charter school outside of the district. And this was something that Pat wrote up ten years ago. And I just, I just so happened to be on the legislative platform committee at the time and had one heck of a time getting it passed through the platform committee, because at the time, everybody just looked at me and said, "How did you do that? How do you have your union allow you to have a charter school?" And I said, "I think our administration just got the message to them that if they didn't have it, there would be fewer of them around." And I think that our union accepted that, and we, we now, we've been fighting this battle for ten years, trying to get it at least into the, the chambers of the House and the Senate. There is a lot of resistance, because there's probably about three point two million dollars that's being passed around in the House and the Senate in the way of campaign financed money. So all we got to do is try and get as many schools on, on board. Now, PSBA has requested resolutions from all school districts in support of, and there's a simple resolution.
We did that.
We, I am going to go, that's one thing I'm going to do up in Butler, is to get the word out to the people up there, and also, you know, attend the legislative update down in Upper St. Clair this, on the ninth, I guess it is, and try and get the message to the people, the boards there. You saw it at Beatty, there's Hampton and North Hills were the only ones that would be affected by it. The rest of them are.
The part that frustrates me is that the whole charter school and cyber school movement came about as something new and innovative. And if we're doing this as a public school district, what's so new and innovative about what the cyber charter schools are doing? They've just, they've walked away from what their original intent was as public schools begin to develop their own cyber charter schools. We have a full cyber program here. It is not new or innovative for you to go to somebody else's cyber school. It drains our budget. That's the frustrating part that I have, particularly whenever I know the performance of the charter school or the cyber school students in this district who are taking our classes compared to the cyber school students in other districts that are not taking our classes. But we still get the bill to the tune of about a million dollars. That's the frustrating part. Nothing new, nothing innovative, substandard education for the price of a million dollars.
And I've talked to one family who brought their, their, their children back to North Hills from PA's charter, and they were absolutely amazed at the amount of effort that we expended doing media work to get their kids up to grade level in all subjects, math, reading, and sciences. So we're, we're doing something right, so. But the problem is not every school district has a K through twelve cyber charter program, and consequently, they're not interested in these, these, these particular bills. We have to go out and try and draw support. Right now, in the northern area, I think it's just Hampton and North Hills. I know North Allegheny doesn't, and the other smaller districts don't.
Do we accept students from other districts into our center?
We do. We contract with several districts. I know Avonworth is one. Are we still with Baldwin? Just Avonworth?
Yeah.
And Avonworth students take their cyber classes here.
And that's the thing, it's got to be written into the bill, and when we go to advocacy day to get that written in the bill, if they're paying another public school district for cyber services, that they shouldn't have to pay the, the going rate from the for-profit schools. So I think that's something. I don't know if we can handle that kind of workload or, but.
That'd be a good way to get more support. Absolutely.
It'd be a method of revenue, but what is the expense? That's the, the only issue, so. So that's it. I hope we can get more support to get people to submit resolutions to limit the cyber school.
I, for myself, I'm sure the board feels the same way. I want to thank you for what you do, because I, since you've been involved, we've, we haven't had this kind of involvement from the board, at least from my perspective, it's not a criticism, but you really get involved, you kind of, you really know what's going on. It's great to keep us informed on what's happening in Harrisburg and maybe even from the federal level to see what we're up against, especially on this charter school issue. And I, I do appreciate the way you get, you dig your heels in and start finding things out and get the facts back to us, so we kind of know what's happening out there. I think it's a, it's a great benefit to us. Thanks. I really appreciate that. Thank you. We can move on to policy. Mr. Kelly?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Nudie. We have six items under policy, and all of them have had the appropriate presentations and reading by the board members. The first one, policy two oh three, which concerns humanization and communicable diseases and health records, policy, which is a revision. Policy two forty-one, a revision on bullying and cyber bullying. Policy two forty-two, a revision for foreign exchange students. Policy two four four, a new policy concerning diabetes management. And policy eight thirty-seven, a revision of the suicide awareness, prevention, and response. And policy number nine eighteen, Title One, this is also a new policy, Title One Parent and Family Engagement. With that in mind, the superintendent recommends and I so move that the board approve policy items one through six.
Second, is there any discussion?
Just a, I guess, reiteration that these all come from the PSBA's recommendations, correct?
Do we have, I mean, I guess we can vote, but do we have any others that are coming in? If it's, if Dr. Manarino, you're still working on?
I'm still working on it. There are some coming.
Okay. Very good.
So we just kind of flew a process of, of adding everything to match the PSBA standards.
Correct. Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. All right, here come the big numbers. Dr. Nolish.
Okay, thank you. We have five, five items on the finance agenda tonight. The first four are standard monthly. We have the general fund bills, the construction fund bills, the budget transfers, and the payroll for the month of March. And this month, in addition to paying the bills, we have a resolution twenty nineteen dash six for the sale of an unusable parcel of land. And this resolution is to relinquish our one-third interest in lot one two three in the Benton addition plan. And it is a piece of property that's not usable or necessary for school district purposes. It's currently owed equal one-third interest by the county of Allegheny, North Hill School District, and Ross Township. And the request has come forward to purchase the property from the three bodies. So if all three agree to sell, then the purchaser will pay any cost or expenses, so there will be no negative budget impact, and proceeds would be split evenly between the three taxing bodies.
Is it a couple million or what?
Unusable parcel.
We could, for an unusable parcel.
All firm. Take this one million if you like.
So it's not something that, it, whatever it be used for school district purposes, I think it's just a situation where the three bodies ended up owning the piece of property. And, you know, now someone does have a, a request for it, so. The superintendent recommends and I so move that we approve finance items one through five.
Second, is there any discussion?
I have a quick question I received from a community member. Do we, do we reimburse Westview for crossing guards? Do we pay them directly? How does that work?
By law, the municipalities hire and position crossing guards, and we're required to reimburse them for one half of their cost.
One half, okay. Thank you.
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, Dr. Nolish. Support services, I think you have a few things on there, or at least one thing, Mr. Benner.
I got one, one item. It's listed the new bus drivers for the ABC Transit company that we have. They've all received their clearances, and we just have to pretty much approve the listing. So I, the superintendent recommends and I so move that the board approve the support services, item number one.
Second, is there any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Before we now come to the point, before closing the meeting, that we would ask anybody to speak on, from our standing room in the crowd here, on public comments on non-agenda items, if anybody would like to speak. If you'd like to state your name and address, sir, for the record.
My address is not perfect.
He's ready to know for seconds.
You have thirty seconds, bud. I'll hurry. Okay, I'll give you forty-five. It's about the crowd tonight. Good evening. Matt Devmater, President of North Hills Education Association, a couple comments tonight, first of which, in reference to late Mrs. Bender. She has always been, to my knowledge, a strong supporter of NHGA and the teaching staff as long as I can remember being an employee here. Before I really got involved with the association, I always knew of her as being a really strong supporter. And I think back to three or four years ago, whenever I took a leadership role, and I really hardly met you in the room very well, and I ran, ran into her at a restaurant, and she called me over and gave me a hug. And it was a very motherly type of bond, and she was like, "Just be part of her, and we'll support you." And it really, that's something that sticks with me unpersonally, and so on behalf of the entire association, she will be greatly sort of missed, and I just wanted to acknowledge her. As far as our contract is concerned, to kind of echo Mr. Wogus and Mrs. Spade and Dr. Manarino's comments, on behalf of the association, we'd like to extend our gratitude and, and thank you all for your support and your willingness to work with us to kind of hammer out our deal. It's a five-year deal, as everybody knows. Our average increases are somewhere in three point four percent raise area. And, you know, to your comments, Mr. Wogus, we, we also acknowledge that, you know, we can't have everything, but we really feel comfortable with the agreement, and we've got some conditions back, and so there's other things that really, we really came to the table with to improve working conditions other than just straight salary. And the fact that you all were willing to listen and hear what the, the staff's requests were, and what these were demands, what their requests were, and what would make things better for kids and for the, the entire machine of the district as a whole in general, means a lot to myself as one of the co-chief negotiators and to the association as a whole. And that speaks volumes really to the rapport and the relationship that we've built with the board and with the administration. And I am personally extremely proud of the agreement, and it was a lot of work, and, but it was, it was something that we feel that was worth working for. And again, our sincere gratitude and thanks to everybody involved. And in, in the relationship behind closed doors, I remember other folks saying, "Oh my gosh, you got to negotiate contract. Good luck with that." I mean, I don't want to get myself into here. And it really, it has been, in my mind, almost a three-year process from whenever, you know, our, our team kind of, you know, assumed power a couple years ago, and worked on some larger MOUs, and worked on some bigger issues, and kind of just established that rapport. And, and again, as I said, we feel really comfortable working with you guys, and it's something, again, that I am personally proud of, and again, our sincere thanks and gratitude to all of you. Lastly, Mr. Kelly, your comments about coming through the shops and smoking cigarettes and sort of things, it cracks me up a little bit, but on a serious, on a serious note.
Let's go going on.
With all of these are.
You know, made in wood shop.
It's a sleight of fire, hasn't it? We, we feel in tech ed and all the arts, the art program, the music program, tech ed, family consumer science, we have unbelievable catalog of electives. You guys talk about the online program. We really are a, a unique situation here in North Hills. I mean, I think as a testament to you all in this room, we do so much with what we have to work with. And it's, I'm proud to say that I work here when I tell people what I do and where I work. And your comments really, it, it just, that, that means a lot to me, being a, a specials teacher, and it's good to see you come out. Mr. Nudie, you've always been a strong supporter of our program personally. I know Dr. Nolish and other, other, you, all of you are just really, everybody has a little special spot in their heart for all the different things that we do as a whole. And on behalf of the association, to all of you, just wanted to send our sincere thanks for your continued support, because it is tough to make these decisions. Everything we do costs money somewhere. I get that, and the association does too. And we know it's not easy sometimes to make decisions about what you're going to keep and what you're maybe going to. and what you're maybe going to lose and how to proceed, but you guys have some of the toughest jobs there are, so we thank you for that and that's all.
Thank you, guys. Thank you. Okay, anybody else?
I do not endorse smoking in woodshop. He's not representing.
You're all on woodshops.
Teacher didn't watch.
It's just Titans guarding, guarding woodshop. That's right. All right, that being said, I'll, I'll mention that we adjourn the meeting.
Yeah, we, next week's meeting.
Next, oh, we're, we're not, we're, next week's meeting is canceled.
Yeah, and I, I.
We should make those.
Yeah, and I, I'm not in favor of canceling the meeting. I think I'm the only one, but I think, you know, it gives the public, I generally like to have more meetings, maybe, you know, whatever, but it gives the public more of an opportunity to come in here and, and express their concerns to us. And I don't, I don't like it being such a big gap in between our public meetings. So I just want to mention that.
This, this is true. The, for a number of reasons, but.
I know our.
May is going to get a little busy.
Yeah, we have three meetings in it.
So we got some time now to kind of gather.
Well, I would rather have several short meetings than much longer meetings. But I just want to mention that and like I said, I, I accept that I'm the only one that may think that or hope for, but anyway, not meeting, so.
Okay.
Yep, that's it.
Meeting adjourned. Thank you all.